Board of Commissioners work session for Wednesday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty. A review of work session discussion meeting minutes. Have any changes? Department head report. Joe?
Oh, I'll be brief to possible. Yeah, I actually I'll make an on the census report for the county. I'm just gonna make my update on what's going on with the census. So far, we have been in contact with a lot of municipalities that want to serve the census. About a week ago, I sent our emails to a lot of nonprofits and a lot of municipal governments, including the public libraries about having access or allowing their computers out in a public area for access if you can do their census online. As you know, census takers, they go to homes and stuff, they try to take the census or try to get the census or get the default census in their private homes. So what's happening is that's becoming one of the problem. To give you an update, the forums will go online on March twelfth. That's when it will go online and it will be online until July, until July thirty first. And between that time, if they don't get a good response back, that's when they'll start sending people out to people's residence to draw the census. During this time of day, a lot of people are uncomfortable with that, so we've developed a new method. What we're doing is we are asking any organization, municipal governments, public libraries, if they will have a computer in their area, in their public area, that a citizen can come in and fill out the census online. So far, we have a pretty good response. We have about twenty agencies. I volunteered their computers. I talked with the housing authority, the other public libraries, I volunteered their computers. And in the courthouse, I talked to Katie in the law library, she volunteered one of her public computers. And we made investments for some more computers also. Probably the school district to see if there are computers available. Therefore, I'll be going to people, private residents, and asking this personal information about how much money they got and everything else, they can basically go to a public computer. Or they can meet a census taker there in the library somewhere, they can fill out the information. Also, we have these four, where do you see these large posters at? We make a large ones. Right here, this will be a sign that the census is being taken in that area. So if you see a large poster like this hanging like outside of the library, municipal building anywhere, that means that you can go in there and utilize their computer and stuff and actually can fill out the census form. And the reason why I'm here today because I'm asking, I asked commissioners, will we be allowed to post this online on the county website? And also have a link to the census. That way someone can go on the county website and they can link to the census, they can fill out their form. And I talked to IT already, they said I have no problem putting them on the site, but I just need to come talk to the board of commissioners and see can we also put this on the county website and have the public be able to come in and sign a link to it. If you know of any other organizations out there that can load a computer out, whether it's a church or a nonprofit, they have a computer in the public area, that the public can come in and fill out their census form, you can let me know and I'll get over to Katie David, she works in the census, and she's a census representative for southwestern Pennsylvania, and we're definitely going on the list. Once that list is finalized, what I plan to do is share with everyone in this room, anybody in, I mean, of course, in the county, and you'll be able to go to the county website and you'll be able to look on that list, for example, Beaver Library, the courthouse here, or maybe some other agency. We have, even the private companies also, we had a couple of private companies that said they were going to make computers, but you'll be able to go on that site. You better find a location near you, you'll be able to go and fill out those census in that, on that site. That's where we at with it.
Hey, Joe.
Sorry.
Can you remind us again, because this question comes up everywhere, state of the county, different stuff, the importance of the numbers and what those numbers represent in terms of funding from different things as well as our representation?
Sure. I'm gonna, so you're right here, Commissioner, you know, the commissioners, and I read from this forum. If you want to know about the census, census, the census actually very important for a number of things. Even if you have a draft, not that happens, but if you have a good draft, they didn't know how many people or certain names, we didn't know where to draft from. Also, if you look at this forum here, I'll just pass these out, you can pass them around. And I don't think a lot of them, but also section eight housing, it affects infrastructure. For every one thousand people that's undercounted, you're losing one million dollars. So every one thousand people, you have to give a million dollars. Every one thousand people undercounted, you could possibly lose a million dollars in funding. If you're undercounted, you lose congressional seat, state seats. Right now, Pennsylvania's population is growing, but it's not growing as fast as North Carolina. You only got four hundred and thirty-five, I think, congressional seats. They're creating more and more seats, so if you start losing population, they'll get your congressional seat from you, they'll give it to North Carolina or Arizona. So that's how it works as far as our population distribution works. That's how funding works. And so as far as infrastructure grants, section eight housing, public assistance, it affects just about every aspect of your life as far as however funding goes. And when the United States Senate get these numbers probably within a year or something, that's how they will determine how to appropriate the funds to different states and different agencies. So it's very important that you get accurate count. Their numbers will come in out of a certain area where you know you'll get the funding that you deserve because you're undercounted. And let's say we have a population that shows that we have one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, but it's one hundred and eighty thousand people actually living here, one hundred and ninety, that's a strain on your, that's a strain on your budgets and everything else. There's a, there's gonna be an interactive, interactive, interactive map, and if you look at it, you'll see that the areas that's undercounted are basically areas of low income areas, many river towns, a lot of rural areas are undercounted because it's very difficult, very difficult to get those numbers and to get people to cooperate in those areas. The areas of the suburbs and stuff is a lot easier, a lot of people doing online and everything that goes. Because a lot of people in the suburbs probably have more money than they able to buy nice personal computers and they able to get the census filled out at home. But in a lot of areas, that's just not gonna happen. So that's where you are with it and everything. So hopefully, we'll get more cooperation, we'll have more computers available. And I'm hoping for questions after the meeting, if anybody have any questions concerning the census. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other department head? Treasurer Higley?
Sandy Higley, county treasurer, newly elected, thirty days. I have some information that I'd like to give the commissioners. Welcome. Sure, absolutely. So every year about this time, I'd like to present this to you so that Corey can have some information for planning purposes. What this is, is it explains to you what happened last year and looking at what's going to happen this year. So in two thousand and nineteen, eighty-eight thousand letters went out for taxes. What that looks like is, since Joe brought props, we have, we brought props too. That basket represents about four hundred letters that went out. We currently have five bins down there that we're processing. So you can see from last year, the most taxes come in within the next two weeks. Two weeks are gonna be very critical for my office. As you can see, we only collected eleven million dollars from January to date. And last year, during the FaceTime period, we collected forty-five million. So the next two weeks, we are going to be hammered with the amount of taxes that are coming in. That, on top of that, is dog licenses, which are sixteen thousand. Everything in my office is processed by hand, which I'm looking at the processes and we're gonna talk a little bit about the processes here in a minute. But you can see that the discount period from one thirty twenty to three three twenty, that time period is when you're going to get the influx of money. And the last two years are the only years that I can see on record as to when we have transferred that influx of money out of the general fund into a home savings account to earn interest. And as you can see, last year, we collected seven hundred, a little over seven hundred thousand in interest last year. I'm gonna be paying very close attention to that amount. And I'd like to increase that amount because two years ago, we weren't collecting any interest. We were just using the general, the money in the general fund, as far as I can see. Dog licenses and hunting and dog tags, you can see that, how much that we bring in for that. Donations to the Humane Society, I thought I, yes. Is he here?
Yeah, he's up there.
There you are. As you can see, that our office collects, we have jars at each window. We also have letters that go out with every dog license that they can write a check to the Humane Society and then he comes in and collects that like every quarter or so. So you can see the amounts that we collect for that. And did you have any questions on this report? If there's anything that you would like to see additionally on this? I don't thi, as when I was commissioner, this report would have been very nice for me to have moving forward. So if there's anything that you would like to see moving forward, let me know. But I think that this gives you an idea of how much money that you can expect and when you can expect it, so that helps in the planning process, I think. So the next thing I want to talk about is the processes. In Pennsylvania, there are about two online programs for dog licenses. And we process these dog licenses by hand. And there's a program that actually does this online. We have done our research and we interviewed two of the companies. We are only one of three counties that don't do online dog licenses. So I would like to see if we could get the online dog licensing. Like I said, two companies. The company that we have selected that we would like to ask the commissioners if, since you're in charge of contracts, is to take another step forward in looking at a program that not only does dog licensing, but they do small games, they do bingo, special raffle, pistol, and in the next three months, they're going to incorporate hotel tax. And the cost of this program is two hundred and fifty dollars a month or three thousand per year. And I'm gonna give you some information on that as well. That's my next conversation. There you go. So what's really nice about this online dog licensing is that the citizens will have the convenience of registering online. And as you can see from the report that I gave you, we only have sixteen thousand, a little over sixteen thousand dog licenses in this county.
So it sounds like our census is a little underreported there.
Yeah, you can't tell me that we don't have sixteen thousand more, we don't have more dogs than that. So, so that's why I want to have the convenience of being able to do this online. So what I would like to ask is if we can continue this research a little bit further, work with the law office and start, get a contract. Now, the problem is, here's the problem, it costs money. I don't have that money in my budget. Two hundred and fifty dollars a month, three thousand a year, I would need to have that money put into my, into my budget. There's no real reward in there. So we can continue to have that conversation. The next item up that I want to talk about is a drop box. Once again, convenience to the taxpayers. We recently went to Lawrence County to see how they do, they process, and they did have a drop box in their county courthouse. They selected a wooden door to the outside and cut out an area in that wooden door and you could slide the payment in there. I asked Dan from DPW to come down and we looked at different scenarios around the courthouse. We looked at maybe putting it at the window over here, looked at putting it inside the atrium. And what we came up with is maybe have something out at the curb here, at the one-way street here by the garage, in between the garage and the courthouse, making a cement pad, which is what you say, four by four, maybe, something like that?
Yeah, it would probably be about one four by one four.
And installing that so that people could drop off their taxes. Like I said, it's a convenience. And we see a lot of people come in and pay their taxes into the courthouse. But if they had a drop box, it would, it would just add for a lot of our elderly and we do have a lot of elderly in our county. So that's just one more convenience that I'd like to offer. In that proposal, that's a little over two grand. Once again, I do not have that in my budget. So I'm looking to see if we can take the next step forward and working with the law office to see about purchasing this, this. And I also want to do a little bit more research to talk to the post office to see if there are any rules and regulations, and also talk to Beaver Borough to see if there are any zoning laws that we would come in trouble with. So I'm asking for permission to take the next step forward on that.
I'll have a problem with either one of those. Do you know, well, first of all, as long as this has handicap accessibility and compliance.
Agreed.
Would that be a important thing? But with the dog licenses, do you have any estimate on how much more we would get in dog license revenue if we did it online? Is there any data out there? I mean, you still have to convince people that they need to license their dogs, which is an ongoing issue, right? But will this generate more licensed dogs by having it online?
So to get that answer for you, I would have to pull the numbers for the fourth-class counties to see the compare of what we, what we do and what they do. So I can get those numbers.
I just think that would help with the decision if we paid three thousand, but we may recoup another ten thousand in dog license fees.
Right, right.
It pays for itself pretty, pretty quickly, that's all.
Right, so when we were at Butler County, they collect about the sixteen thousand that we do, but they're a fifth, I believe it is, fifth-class county. And they use online dog licensing. I'll get those numbers for you. The next up, I wanted to talk about my visit to Lawrence County. And as you know, that Lawrence County is also under the Vanango Act. The Vanango Act means that the county collects the county tax, not the municipalities. And there are only one, two, three, four, five counties that do that, Chester, Green, Lawrence, and Washington. And so there are efficiencies that can be done. We're looking at lock boxes, maybe having a bank have their window open to collect county taxes. That's how Lawrence County does it. So those types of efficiencies and conveniences offered to the citizens, that's kind of the protocol that I'm looking at, the hierarchy of the priorities that we're, we're looking at in the treasurer's office. The next item that I wanted to talk about is newly elected officials' protocol. When I took office, in my office, I didn't receive any manuals, no additional information as such as the bonds that the previous treasurer held or inter-office protocol and duties. Those things were all gone. And what I'm asking is if every four years, we're gonna have this happen with newly elected officials. And I'm asking that we pay close attention to, I realize stepping on those toes of elected officials and their control of their office, but I'm starting from scratch. And for a newly elected official balancing more than fifty million dollars and having to start from scratch is a big task. The locks, we didn't receive a lot of that kind of information that we needed. And I know that other officials have, have had the same problem. And it's really a daunting task for a newly elected. If I would have had those manuals or that information, you don't have to recreate. And we're talking about an elected official that was there for twenty-eight years and there's nothing in my office. So, go ahead.
So if I can add to that, Sandy and I talked about it, I mixed with Sandy right from the beginning. So let's learn from this, right? How's the call, the county code has two paragraphs of what our rights are for getting that county property back from the previous elected official. It's hard to do that after the fact because it's all been shredded and deleted and so we can't recreate that. So if we've learned from this experience going forward, it's within our right, maybe there's listeners who can establish protocols that we don't lose that history, which is county property. Anything that we do in our offices is county property. It's not my personal property, it's county property. So if we can learn from this last time, you know, we can't go back now, but we should move forward, learn from that, I think.
So I guess obviously the board has to ask, are you reporting to the board of commissioners that there was county property destroyed?
My office was empty.
Literally.
So you guys know that was in that office, how much was in that office? Was it county or was it all personal? You should learn from the past.
And neither one of us were permitted in that office before we took office on January the sixth.
It's unfortunate.
It is, it is unfortunate. And that leads to the conversation between the treasurer's office and the comptroller's office. One of the things that priority that we're taking into consideration are an audit. There was an audit started in two thousand and fifteen. It was ever sent to the previous treasurer and it was started but never finished. Before that, we don't have any history of any audit being done in the treasurer's office. So we don't, we have, internally, we do the CAFR. We do an annual report, but it's a conglomeration of all of the county offices and the standing of the county financially. But an internal audit of the treasurer's office is desperately needed. So we're gonna, I'm working with, with Maria and the comptroller's office to see how we can facilitate that. And if we need extra help or outside help, we'll, we'll be talking with you in public and letting you know what, what our process is. Her new chief deputy is, is brand new, so we're waiting just till he gets acclimated a little bit. And because the influx of mail that's going to be coming through my office in the next two weeks, that's gonna be something that's gonna be looked at in March, if not May.
Maria, have you met with Brian Binkley from Binkley Canaby yet?
Yeah.
Did he not do an audit in December of the office? Or was that for a specific dog license or licensing fees? Do you know that?
I do not know. I know that, so what they have over here, Binkley, Binkley Canaby does some level of auditing of those forms. We are evaluating to what level that is and if we feel it's sufficient for what we want to see. Until we work with Binkley Canaby more and see what those controls were and what they were looking for, we won't know, you know, does that mean it was sufficient or not.
Exactly, I thought for some reason, I thought there was something put in place that he was auditing the treasurer's office in December for an exit audit.
We don't have anything official or.
Either do we, I'd say.
That was part of, I can speak to that, that's part of the CAFR.
Okay.
And I asked him that as well.
Okay.
Now, what does happen is there's an audit of state funding, all state funding, so fishing, dogs, though, all of that, pistol. But that doesn't talk about quality control efficiencies.
So you're looking to audit the entire office?
I'm looking at bank breaks, I'm looking at getting into details.
We just don't know how deep they go yet, Brian hasn't seen all that background yet, so we're working on that.
So Binkley was coming in in December to start the CAFR. He did that office first, is what we were saying, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department head report? Hearing none. Move the solicitor's report?
On the list of resolutions tomorrow, there's forty-seven resolutions. Couple of the highlights, resolution number two deals with the various toilets throughout the county parks. This is just a contract for those. Three and four is we do yearly, it's for allergy control at the lake at Brady's Run, excuse me. Number fifteen is a tax exoneration. Number sixteen is a contract to provide uniforms for jail guards at the jail. Number twenty-four is for the timber sales. This individual, we currently have a contract in place that is set to expire. They go through and they pick out various trees in the parks that are in need of being cut down. And then he'll organize a, a list of those trees and we'll auction off individuals to come out and cut down those trees and sell those trees for the county to have a profit from. Number thirty is with waste management. That's established in October twentieth as the hazardous waste material collection date here in the county. Number thirty-four and thirty-five deal with the planning commission. It's to establish a utility database and for assistance with a tax credit program for the ventilation of River Towns. I don't know if you want to add anything to either of those, Lance?
Yeah, if you need me to, sure. That tax credit program, does it fall over? It's a waterfront development tax program. We were, the work that we've done previously made us one of only five in the entire state. We were able to get a waterfront development, a five oh one C three to be set up. And we're, like I said, we're only one of five in the state, so we went and found the five. That's five oh one C three, we are, we get them, go to HEV, DCED, get them set up. So there's three affiliate, one in Erie, and us. And it sets us up for a really good tax credit program. We also had two, two projects that we put in there that were approved, that are on the list. So if funding is available, we can go through it. It's a seventy-five percent tax credit, so it's above and beyond a lot of the other tax programs that are out there. There's been a lot of work that's been done, some of that, a lot of that work has been done by a consultant going back and forth, getting me in front of the secretary of DCNR and continually going out to DCED and having conversation after conversation to help push this project through. So that's what we're asking for that to, to continue. And then the infrastructure grant would be the other one. We've done, we've done a needs assessment that was through previously through some funding through EIP. And the remainder now is to essentially be able to take a look into everything, the water, gas, broadband, stormwater, and put it all in, digitize it all, put it on GIS so that anytime any developer would come in, we would be able to have a, a list as much as we possibly could to know exactly what we have and where we have it.
Thanks. And then I skipped over number five. Number five is for the maple syrup festival. It's the agreement with the conservation district and Bush to put on the maple syrup festival for two thousand and twenty.
Has it been agreed to?
Mm-hmm. Yep, everyone, everyone's on the list. Yeah, we're the last one to sign off.
Good.
And with that being said, unless there's any questions on the resolutions, we'd need an executive session to discuss the litigation matter.
Any questions on any of the resolutions? Hearing none. We'll move to board of commissioners' report.
Just want an update on the paving project at Brush Creek and.
They are, I spoke with Jack Hoak out of Brush Creek Park yesterday. They said that they have about five more cross drains to install. So they should be wrapping it up pretty soon. And I'm, I'm thinking, you know, once they wrap that up, we'll out there, we'll get a good assessment as to what the, you know, condition of the road is in, how it's being restored on a temporary basis as to whether or not we can open the park back up to the road until the actual paving takes place.
And have we heard anything about the Brush Creek group?
I haven't got any.
Yeah, I haven't had any further contact.
Tony, myself and Dan met last week with Jody McLean, who's part of that group, and she did secure the other ten thousand dollars. So she has twenty-five thousand now for a new playground and grants from, I guess it would be three different. One anonymous, five thousand dollar grant, and then two ten thousand dollar grants from Dominion Energy and Penn Energy, I believe, were the two. So she's taken the ball by the horns and reaching out to the playground company to see what she needs to do to purchase it and see if there's anything available and whatnot.
It'd be great if we could find one that somebody else had ordered and.
Like that, yeah. So, but that's, at least that's, I say that about that. The only thing I have is, yesterday, the board had an informational meeting with the FA for Vaughn due to the funding for the reass. FA for bond due to the funding for the reassessment and the energy efficient program that Constellation has been putting on, along with a few capital projects included in that. They provided us with information on different options, on taking new money and refunding some money and trying to keep zero budget effect, zero effect on the budget. So the board has that information, and I think we're all independently reviewing it, and I would assume in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably be discussing that here at work session on, you know, what the direction of that will be. So that's all I have.
But just a couple of things from my standpoint. And for the record, you and Tony and Sandy were very good with me as a news official, being able to come in and get work handed and everything. So I do appreciate that effort that took place. A couple of things. One, speaking of the conservation district, I attended my first board meeting Monday, and they are thrilled with being able to hand that off with Push. Looks like things are coming along real well there, and they're also trying to fill a couple of vacancies that they have, so.
Are they going to make recommendations?
Yes, yes. So they have another round of interviews and some things, and I think they'll be coming back with recommendations for us to take a look at. So I was real excited about that. The other thing was, just to bring to everybody's attention, I was invited by Elder Vogel and the agricultural secretary, Russell Redding, to attend a Farm Bureau Agricultural Mental Health Roundtable at Penn State Beaver last week. And I had some follow-up meetings with Eric Brewer, it's everything about crisis prevention and stuff. But the most compelling thing about that meeting was the mental health stress on our farmers. And outside of maybe teens and veterans, farmers as a group are having a suicide rate that is astronomical, and something I think most people don't appreciate, don't understand, and can fully comprehend, the pressure on some of these farmers, particularly the dairy farmers in our region. It's quite an issue, and we talked about multiple ways to do that. And there were, there were some farmers, by the way, there from central PA on through, and they just had some great stories about, you know, if this farm's been in your family's legacy for hundreds of years, you don't want to be the farmer that had to sell the farm and be considered the failure that stopped that legacy. And the pressure is huge on these guys.
We discussed in Penn State Extension meeting.
Yeah.
And I mentioned that when I was a teacher, four percent of the population was involved in farming. Now it's down to two percent of the entire population. And as you said, these families don't want to be the responsible party to give up the farm.
Yeah.
And it's pretty devastating. A lot of our dairy farmers are having to get out of dairy farming. Some of them are getting out of farming altogether, some of them are getting involved in beef farming. As far as dairy farming, the money's just not there anymore.
Yeah, they're down to, I think thirteen dairy farms in Beaver County, most of them relatively small. And it's a difficult situation, so we talked about ways to get the extension, the Farm Bureau, different county agencies and stuff, but also reinforce, to me, the value of what you do with the farm preservation and that kind of stuff. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to people's attention, and we'll have some follow-up meetings on that, so. That's got a whole bunch of other stuff, so we'll get on with it.
Any other business from the commissioners? Hearing none. Any other business? Audience participation?
My name's Roger Thomas. Everyone of you know me, and I have two items of business in front of you that I'd like to discuss at the moment if I can. Sir, can you get that shot so I can finish this? I have to make a record of where I presented, and so on, and so on, and so on. Did a ninety-degree, whatever you're going to do. Okay. Look at that.
Good.
Got it?
Yep.
Two things, and two items of business I'd like to call to your attention if I could, please, both of which are old business. First item of business, I presented to you in March a representation of how we can save thirty-five thousand dollars for just Beaver County if you will change the jury assessment from the state laws to the federal law. I have Connor Lamb giving me a statement from the Internal Revenue Service stating that the IRS acknowledges that they owe the wages paid while a salaried person or a wage earner is on jury duty. The IRS pays that. You don't have to pay that. There are three, four personal benefits of that. First of all, the juror would receive his actual pay, however much he gets paid on a daily basis, that is how much he would be paid. Secondly, the employer, who right now receives no income at all, no compensation for jury duty, would be paid in full. The third aspect is that the county would save thirty-five thousand dollars. This is just Beaver County. I have, there are sixty-seven counties. I've done the poll of all sixty-seven, I've got about fifty-three, fifty-four results back, and the numbers are astounding. I want you to understand that the Internal Revenue Service reported to Connor, they owe this money. All we have to do is change from the state law to the federal law. The reason I'm belaboring this with you at the moment is that on March twenty-second, I have to present to the CCAP, to the Board of Courts and Corrections, I think I have that right, Boards of Courts and Corrections, I am to meet with them and make a presentation. I have talked to several of these people, I've talked to the people, am I going to finish that sentence? I've talked to several members of CCAP, and although they've received my reports, they haven't read them. I'm asking you, I don't know how many of you are going to be there at the CCAP meeting on the twenty-second of March, but I'm asking you to go there, be informed, and be of some assistance to me in my presentation. Okay, I know that the Schulte County people are going to be there, they're prepared, the Berks County people are going to be there, they're prepared, but I'm very afraid, there are people sitting in this room who are schoolteachers, and you know what it's like to make a presentation if the class doesn't come, the class prepared. I'm asking for your help on that. Can you please help me on that?
I cannot be present. I have, I sit on two different committees that meet at that time. I sit on an election reform committee and a natural gas committee, so I'm assuming you're, do you know what time your meeting is?
It's three o'clock.
Three o'clock. That would be my election reform committee's at three, and then my natural gas is at one. I will, I'll be at CCAP so I could try and make it over, but I have my committees that I sit on.
There's a meeting, there's committee meetings at one o'clock, three o'clock, and five o'clock.
You're on that board, you're listed.
You sit on the Courts and Corrections.
Courts and Corrections board.
He will be there.
I hope you can be there.
I'll be there.
Okay, Jack, is there any chance that you can make it?
Well, I'm not in the committees.
You can be in the audience.
This conference, I will be. Don't worry.
If you can be there, be attendance, read the report, it's all there. I have documentation from the IRS saying that they owe it. I have two documentation, two CPAs positively identifying, but if the class isn't prepared, it's going to go wrong.
Any chance we have to send the bill to the IRS? I'm in favor, so.
He said that, I didn't say that. It's a redistribution of indebtedness, that's, you know, that was an economic term.
Does it require a law passed in Harrisburg?
The law that's been introduced in Harrisburg is House Bill nineteen seventeen.
Nineteen seventeen.
Yeah, and that's, we have to get, if I can get CCAP behind me, I have fifty members of the General Assembly who are interested in this, but right now it's just Roger Thomas up there talking. I need, you know, this is something that they do not expect from the Methodist Church, they need somebody from CCAP. If CCAP can do behind me, we can carry this. Okay?
I just don't know how long it's going to take to go through the CCAP process.
Oh, if I get a.
This is just a committee that you'll be addressing. There'll be a member from CCAP seated there and taking notes and making recommendations.
A member of CCAP will be there, there will be.
Brenda Knack.
Oh, please write that down. I think I've got that somewhere. But they, if she'll be there, I am, this is an election year, the general sum is going to go into recess on June twenty-sixth, I know that. There's half the people, all of the members of the House of Representatives and half of the members of the Senate, a third of the members of the Senate are going to be up for reelection, we're not going to get anything done for the rest of, but if I can get this far, then in two thousand and twenty-one, I will have a body of information and a body of support, we can just reintroduce the bill. I know I've been at this for more than a week now. Any, anything else you want to have on that issue? Second issue I'd like to call to your attention, and I'm asking you a personal favor. In two thousand and ten, I was charged by the Board of Commissioners at that time to go out and do a study on getting solar energy collection here. We chose the jail, and we chose the jail because there's three acres of flat roof out there, right next to the river, unobstructed. And at the end of the report in June of two thousand and eleven, I presented to the commissioners a report showing that we could take twenty-eight thousand dollars of monthly utility bills at the jail. Zero balance that and commence to produce energy just off the roof of the jail. That's in two thousand and eleven. Those plants are still available. There's been certain modifications that you need to be aware of. First of all, there's been some change in the technology, it's, the basic plan remains the same. Secondly, I understand there's a geothermal heating aspect going on in the jail. And thirdly, there has been substantial changes in what's called the SECRAPS, solar energy credit rates, okay? The way those are structured now are very different than they were in two thousand and eleven. It's come to my attention that Consolidated Energy did a study for you on solar collection, and they looked at the jail and said, if you put solar panels on top of the jail, and you've already got thermal, geothermal going there, the solar panels will contradict the geothermal. That is a factual error. Okay, I can stand here right now and attest to you that that's not accurate. If you're consumed with that, pick another property. We did a study at the Moon Township at the solid waste disposal plant, and showed that we could zero balance their utility bill, and they would become an energy generator. That's just at the solid waste disposal plant. How many pieces of property do you have that belong to the county? Let your mind expand. I'm asking you to organize a study committee to look at the possibility of solar collection, alternative energies in these buildings. If you don't want to check to the jail, this is good. Look at the roof on this building, okay? Do something simple, go back and reexamine the Moon Township solid waste disposal, the work's already been done. Get a committee, organize a committee to go back and study this, gather the information. The reason I'm asking you to do it is that all the work's been done. If I can get Beaver County's attention on it, I can get your report and take it to my home county, and the work will be done there. Please do those two things for me. Please. Thank you.
As you know, Roger, I've been on the job for thirty-some days or whatever it is, and we have brought it up, we've had discussions, and I think we'll continue to explore it. I'm certainly committed to it. I think some of the feedback that I got, in addition to the impact of the geothermal, said that solar renewable energy credits have declined in payback, and the payback may not be there to do some of these projects as they might have been posed in two thousand and ten. So we need to look at all those issues, but I'm open to that.
Remember, the town Wolf has already created a state-level program, and the structure of the SECRAP, I'll get it right now. I don't want to stand over here and say "SE-CRAPE" because that isn't what it is.
Solar renewable energy credits.
Okay? The structure of those has changed. It is still not an eighty, fifteen, five grant. As soon as you get the building installed, the federal government pays the entire amount. You're not stuck with fifteen percent, and the vendor's not stuck with five. It is not an eighty, fifteen, five grant. It's a one-hundred percent grant. Okay? Please organize a committee, do the study, and we can help you. Thank you.
Any other audience participation? Lance, I think you had something real quick.
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to publicly thank Cory. I don't ask for funding often, so trying to figure out where funding was available, he literally took a lot of time to sit down, helping me figure out whether it was funding available, and Nathan and Karen to walk me through, looking at contracts, helping me figure out how to do resolutions, like all that process, they spent a lot of time doing that, and I just want to publicly thank this guy for that.
Any other audience participation? Hearing none. Is there, do we need to reconvene from executive session?
I think we do not.
All right. We will move into executive session, not reconvene?